Can you guys hear me on the Zoom call? Yeah, cool. All right, everybody, it's 6:30. I'm gonna call the meeting to order and start with the Fudge Allegiance. All right, I've got a few people here on Zoom. Shannon, if you notice anybody sitting in the waiting room, let me know. I don't know if I see them. We'll start with the review of the April 6th meeting minutes. There is one correction. And it was the name of the gentleman from. I'm not sure which person. That's a remark. There's either Craig or, okay. It's Craig. Parker.
Yeah.
Oh. There was Peter. I don't know. It was Peter, yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure how to spell his last name. I can get it. Let's do a quick search. I didn't get close enough for Google to catch it for me, so Shannon, I'm trying to look it up. Peter's last name for Navy Point.
We're gonna make the motion to get a change.
Favor?
Hi.
All right. Next up is April 25th meeting minutes.
Second motion.
Oh, in favor? All right. All right. Move on to the tank report. We're actually pretty close to double again. Water metered out about eight million gallons and wastewater took in 14, a little less. I think it was a drier month. Still in good shape. We also had, oh, we got two this. We got Aprils and, sorry, the May one is actually quite close. Eight million. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the the date they sent it, not the date from last year. First one's March, second one's April's report. That one is eight million in and only 10.6 out. So at some point, we can see if this is correlated with rain and then we'll be fairly certain that's what's causing most of it, but I think it looks to be the case. See, then we have an update on the new website. I posted the site to local Facebook group to get some input. Shannon and I have mostly finished the site. We're hoping to go live maybe end of next week. The guy that's been the liaison from the firm that we're working with at Proud City is on vacation this week. So we're filling out some info. Dave L. Terry gave us some park descriptions, but if you see anything on the site that you think should be different, give us a holler and we'll put it on. Anybody have any questions about the website? So we're we've started doing it. Peggy's loading in some of the contacts for the committees and things. Once it's up and running, we do expect, I'm gonna reach out to each of the chairs of each committee and make sure that they are. We're not gonna have them in the admin side, but we want to make sure they take ownership of their meetings page. If they update the schedule, putting in minutes, getting it to Peggy so that she can upload them and eventually ask her. Yeah, so some of the, some of the pages are blank and we're filling in like the descriptors that either exist on the the current site, but a lot of them don't really have anything. And so we have to write it up. So we've been writing some placeholder texts, but if any department or anybody in particular wants to write more, it'll only help Shannon and I get it done quicker. Yeah, the fire department section, I think it just links straight to their website. Yeah, but if they want us to put content directly on a page, we can. Yeah, and updating the copy is really easy. So if people have changes or preferences, they can shoot it over to Shannon or I and, or Peggy. Really, any of us can do it. Yeah, and if anyone on the board wants to get behind the curtain there, we can get your logins. There are certain things, you know, we'll give you the basic how-to, but nothing you can break. We can't unbreak pretty quickly because the logs changes, so. We have to set a end-of-year meeting date. Jim would very much appreciate it if we could do it on the 31st. Save him some trouble. That is a Tuesday. I am available then as everyone else. It looks like we may also do the Madison Barracks. Peggy, you're off that day, but Shannon, are you around? Or Erica can take minutes as well because you'll be, yeah, okay. Do you guys want to do 6:30 again?
Yeah. Keep the same, 6:30 Tuesday, 31st.
All right, so this is Mr. U-House's last year with us. After 43 years. He has he has requested we not do his retirement party on the 31st. I think he wants time to prepare a speech. But we'll be, we'll be putting together something for you later this summer. Schedule to be announced. But I think barring some findings from the village historian, I believe you are the current record holder for longest public servant at 43 years. And I have only worked with you for about a percentage of your time with the village, but for what it's worth, I've enjoyed it and thank you for everything you've done. I know the LDC met this morning and I think there are three ex-mayors on that board and they all were very concerned that we have a celebration worthy of your contributions to the village. So more to come on that, but Jim, thank you very much. We really do appreciate everything you've done. We'll try to keep working together for, for your replacement. I have to say, a few of them warned me off, but it's been fun so far. All right, well, we have to appoint our new treasurer now in order that she can be on the tax warrant. I don't think technically, as it's an interim appointment, we need to do board approval, but I think we're gonna ask for it anyway. I would like to appoint Shannon Mason as the next treasurer of the village. You've got 44 years to beat the record. Do you guys want to put that to a vote?
We can.
May as well.
I'll make the motion to appoint Shannon.
That just goes on the tax floor for the taxes.
It will, yeah, all right, make a turn.
So make that motion. Ron, seconds.
You can third. All in favor?
Congratulations, Shannon.
All right.
Your problem now.
So I'm gonna jump to the other side, just do some quick updates before we get into the fun stuff here. The forest grant update, that parcel that we discussed currently under contract, it may or may not go through, but it didn't make sense to pursue the work to put the grant together for the off chance that the purchase didn't work. For everyone else, there's a parcel that we were looking at possibly purchasing. There was a D C grant for a 90% match to buy forest land and commission it as a park. It looks like the person buying it might have the same thing in mind, so hopefully it'll still be there, but if that deal falls through and the D C renews the grant, we can renew it. We can look at it next year. We did budget for the 10% match. I think we put aside 30,000, so that more than likely will not get used. We can see if Kelly, Kelly Reinhardt comes hunting for the tree, the tree budget for it. Hazard mitigation plan update.
I do want to ask a question for that sale of the property. Is there ongoing legal action right now between the village and the property on you?
Well, I don't know if it's ongoing with the village formally yet. It's definitely a private, it's definitely.
It's a private lawsuit, but Mr. Burrows sent some details to me. Basically, the development that Mill Creek Lane, the cul-de-sac, that was never turned over to the village. That, that road is still owned by Lawler Realty LLC, I think is the, I'm not sure which corporate name it is, but it's one of Lawler's corporations. Dr. Sani's parcel is between the end of the cul-de-sac and Harold Krings development on the other side of Funny Side. It has deeded right-of-way access through Lawler's land. Lawler apparently denied Dr. Sani that access. And Dr. Sani filed a lawsuit because the village was supposed to take that road, but my understanding is it wasn't built to width to the specs it was supposed to be, so we never took it over. At some point in time, we started plowing it because of complaints from the residents. We have, did you get back any info about that? Do we, we don't get that for chips, right? Okay, so we're not getting any chips money for that road, so the, we haven't done any other maintenance besides plowing on it. And Mark spoke with Mike Campbell about the matter and thinks that they will resolve it.
Says that they think it's not a big issue for the, for Mr. Lawler, but we'll find out.
So to be kind of blunt and straightforward, so that Mill Creek Lane is not part of the village right now, right? We're still providing services for that.
Yeah, right. I would suggest that when we look into the, you know, take this matter up again. I mean, you just can't leave it.
No.
We just need to study it now formally, so I'm just suggesting that we put it on.
It could be something that's rolled into the infrastructure agreement for Madison Barrack, something like that.
Well.
I mean, it's the same person, it's the same type of issue.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we have, that agreement will have contingencies that aren't done by it might be worth, but I think more than likely.
Lynn, how difficult is it, is it? How difficult is it to plow if it's not standard size? Yeah, I know, I went down a turn ago.
This might be an issue, but I mean, if right now it's a private lawsuit between Dr. Sani and Lawler LLC, like to see that in the future times lean over to the village or something.
Yeah, and that was Mr. Burrows concerned.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions on the forest grants? Cool. Hazard mitigation plan update. So I did get a call from I think it's Kevin Clapp at Department of Homeland Security. He confirmed the county is moving forward with their own plan. I was sufficiently annoying, hopefully, to get them moving, but it will likely take about 18 months, so I didn't mention this to you, but unless you have changed your opinion drastically, we probably will not be trying to put our own in in the next six months and rushing it just to be able to take a crack at the DR 4880 FEMA money. Because we don't really have a lot of time to put together a solid grant proposal. But we will still have to do a lot of that same work. Or rather, we'll have the option to, and it will be a part of the county's plan. So we will actually get that 75% reimbursement through Homeland Security if the county finishes their plan properly and submits for reimbursement, we can also submit. So that's another case. We had budgeted for doing that ourselves. I think we budgeted 25 or 30. 30 again.
Did you say that Jefferson County did?
They are, they are moving forward. How, no, the county will, Hounfield, so the multi-jurisdictional requirement to get reimbursement, it was county or greater. So because Hounfield was willing to do it with us to get the multi-jurisdictional status. The Homeland Security guy said it has to be with the county. If we were adjacent to a Oswego County, we could have done it. Done it ourselves and applied to join their plan for reimbursement, but because we're not, we would have to convince Ellisburg, Henderson, Hounfield all to do it, which could be a, a lot of work versus just pestering the county until they move forward with it. So they're, they're going to do it. I think Watertown made them aware that they weren't able to get this grant money either and they were surprised, so hopefully they'll get the ball rolling and while we won't be eligible for any of this 300 million, because the, the grant proposals are due June 1st, we will be in time for the next one. It doesn't have to be, that 18 months is when the grant dispersal agreement would be given. So if there is another disaster that has federal funding behind it, as long as it's not in the next three, four months, let's hope the summer goes smoothly, we should be able to put in for that. And by the time the grant would be issued, their hazard plan will be in place and we would be eligible. So another case of hopefully 30,000 we've budgeted for that we don't have to spend. Annual water report. We have copy here and this was mailed out. This is mailed out to the entire village. It will be on Friday. Okay, so I looked through this. I I'm probably not the best person to give you this data. I don't know if, did you get a copy? Okay, well, from my read, it looks like all of the levels we've detected are below the regulatory limits and the report is good. A lot of the things they're looking for, that they were either not found or very small numbers in relation to the limiting factor. But everyone will be getting a copy of this shortly. Do you guys have any questions about this? All right, and we have a quick update on the LDC sale to John Kent that we need to vote on.
Can we check up because we have the water and sewer O and M technicals showing that the rates are going up for day.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that page. Thanks. Okay.
We're not affecting our base contract.
It's just their labor rates are going up.
Do we know how much they went up? I don't have the it doesn't list the previous ones.
No.
Okay, well, should we get this to Lynn, just so you, I don't know if there's some work you could do that is there stuff on here that you guys could do that you choose to give them because of the price, or is it pretty much always better to use them? Okay, just in case like something you guys could do, they move the price up a lot.
Yeah, let's see what the impact of the budget is too, how much they increased it last, for the last time.
Do you know how often we use them for additional labor? Okay, so this, this isn't a high hourly, we're not paying a large number of hours.
Sell them, use them, but they're increasing, so it needs to be noted.
I appreciate that. Sorry, Ms. Duff. All right. Anything else I skipped before we go to the LDC? Okay. So with the LDC sale to John Kent, John Kent's lawyers asked that we pay the title insurance fee because the, the title is not entirely required. There's issues with the the D C claims. Our attorneys, I guess, Megan Walton, so at Jim's firm, but for the LDC said that that was reasonable. The LDC voted to pay half of it. If the village paid the other half, we just need to vote on that. I think the total is seven, was it 700, Jim?
Yeah.
Yeah, $700, so we just need a vote on that.
700 split or?
I think it's 700. I think it was 1,400 total.
So 700 is our half. I'll make a motion to.
Just out of curiosity, 700 was split with the LDC.
No, it's 1,400, so 700 for the village.
The record, the LDC's bank balance is about $600,000. And the LDC has asked us to split it 1,400.
We're also splitting, they're also splitting.
The land is 50/50. Yeah. Yeah. Okay, we've got a motion. Any other questions? All right, all in favor? All right, okay. The only other update for that was
Well, while we're on the LDC, I know there was some discussion on what to do with the village's portion of the money.
Oh, that's, that was.
There's a payback that has to be done, right, for the cleanup of the property? So any proceeds that come, so that needs to be looked into.
Yeah, we had an LDC meeting this morning. They're not 100% clear on what we owe the D C, nor which parcels each debt is associated with. There, I'm not gonna get the town rate. It's not champion. There was another township that had this and basically they just waited and the D C eventually said, never mind, so not super inclined to knock on their door and ask them to take our money, but it is, it is potentially something that could happen if the plan is to take the proceeds, the land is 50/50 on LDC and Village, we're going to split the proceeds. So if the D C did come back and say you owe X dollars, I think we would likely split it 50/50 for that fee as well. But I think.
I just want to put it out there because there's a lot of history here and you gotta look back at it.
Mike is setting a meeting with the D C because of the other interest in the other lots to try and pin down a final number, so we know what we're looking at. Hopefully that will be soon and hopefully it will be a small number.
To your point, there is a legacy or lingering cost out there still we face to clean up these, we use a lot, how much yet?
Yeah.
So once we do.
The other thing is for that splitting, there was a discussion about doing an intermunicipal agreement so that the funds would go into a joint account controlled by the village and the LDC. That's a bit of paperwork. It would take some negotiation. We decided not to do that until potentially the next sale, but it's something that if we want to consider doing. Megan Walton sent over a sample intermunicipal agreement for us to look at. I don't know, did you guys all get copies of that yet?
You didn't.
You didn't, okay. Do you have one? Okay, let me, I'll make a note to get that to you guys because I think she emailed it to me.
Is this the account we talked about that you can do kind of fund certain grants for village activity?
Yeah, it's a question of whether we want to have joint funds or not. There there are some things like the LDC is able to do that we're not, such as loan money to the small businesses, loan money to the stone hospital to repair the roof. It's not clear if there was joint monies, if we would inherit, we probably, they would inherit our inflexibility on that account. So it may not be the best way to maintain that organization's ability to do economic development, but it's probably something that should be publicly decided, one way or the other. But it doesn't look like, you know, that we've, we're almost certainly months and months away from any future sale, so we have time to deliberate over that. All right, and I have two that I don't know if we're written on yours or just notes for me, but the fire department, we just signed the agreement that has been unsigned with the town, the village and the fire department last, last week, this week? Last Thursday. And yeah, if you correct me if I get any of this wrong, but the, the plan is because the town wants to make right the funding discrepancy and fund the full 78,000, but their budget period's already over. They're going to use ARBA funding to do the rest. We need a vote to accept that check and pass it to the fire department. It's just the remainder, so it's the 78,000 minus 4,650, which will.
That is fair, a quick question though, is that fixes this year? How, what's the process in the future years to make sure we're aligned?
No, go first.
We're hoping to set a plan that when we do our budget in the future, I mean, we would have liked them to sit with us during our budget conversation and have someone from the town so that they could get an update from the fire department, ask any questions and hopefully let them know. And I don't know if we wanted them to sign like an unofficial agreement that they were, they were aware of the amount and hoping, I mean, they can't vote on it ahead of time. We're trying to work out with the fire department, okay, so that this doesn't happen again.
The idea is for them to attend, when we do our budget hearings and when they do ours, or when they do theirs, the plan is for them to set a specific time to talk to the fire department and for a representative of their board and a representative of ours to attend the others' meeting. So you basically get a six-month check-in. And the fire department's also said that in the future, if there are any major capital equipment changes that aren't emergency-based, that they'll, they'll run it by us as well. Usually the town has someone here, so we'll try and make sure that if they don't and there's any material stuff happening with the fire department that we let them know and they can check the minutes or, or watch the video.
For those who may not understand, the town's fiscal year is different than the village's.
And is the fire department.
So it's, it's a, things get missed.
Like the town, town knows that the fire department budgets 186,000. Like the town, town knows that the fire department budgeted two hundred eighty six thousand, the village budgeted half of that, or eighty three thousand. So they've got a six month notice that they should be budgeting eighty three.
But from their perspective, it doesn't.
And I mean, they had a different town supervisor and the current town supervisor was kind of locked into that decision.
Yeah, and and they have to have some control over, they they can't. Just because our year happens before, they still have to have oversight of their own budget, so they'll come and basically. If they have any expected issues, they will tell us when during our budget hearing. And but they obviously can't promise that that won't change in the next, in the six months between our budget hearings and theirs.
During our meeting with the fire department last week, that was the concern. Because we do vote on it ahead of time and you're going with the assumption. That they are going to pay half of it because that's the way it's always been, this is the first time that I'm aware of. And Jim who's here might be able to clarify, that's never happened before as far as I know. And you know, honestly, moving forward, I don't know how to guarantee that it doesn't happen again.
It really isn't in our power to do it, we can, we can do our best to prevent it and make sure that we maintain a good relationship with them and we're on the same page.
I mean, from a service perspective and best practices, you know, being embedded inside of their their processes.
So just to clarify, the town, the sign in the village has signed.
Yes, and what we need today, what we need today is just a vote to approve. Yeah, rerouting that check once it's cut. Do you need it, do you need it after the check exists or can we do it now?
They're gonna cut it tomorrow, I think they're voting on it tomorrow.
Okay.
And they hope to cut the check this week so we can give it to the fire department.
I would rather, yeah, rather than put it till the thirty first.
What's the motion exactly then?
I guess that we act as a pass through agency for to accept the ARPA funds from the town for our fire department.
Yes, that will, that will complicate their ARPA reporting, not ours. There's, it's a, because it's a, it's a governmental service, okay, and. Yeah, and basically, Shannon and I were messing with the ARPA reporting forms, they're really fun, take forever to get. But there is a, there's a sub recipient section where if you. Give your money to another organization, there's a way to to file that, so it shouldn't be an issue for them. It only took us like thirty five hours of work to get that website to function. So, cool. So.
Did Barb make it up? I'll second.
Yeah, I made the motion.
Alright, any other questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, alright.
Do you know how to word that? Let the village.
Okay, and then we, last short thing here is a. Quick letter from Jennifer Gaffney. Confirming, I think we already budgeted this, so I think we're good, but I just wanted to confirm, I'm not sure if you guys wanna, if we need to vote on this or if it's done through the budget. But she wanted confirmation that we agree to the same five thousand dollars for shared services for tax collecting.
We budgeted it, did we get an agreement?
Well, they, they wanted to confirm before they send over the MEO.
They want to confirm that we budgeted it, okay.
MOU.
Right.
Yeah.
But we haven't signed an agreement, right?
But the school budget is complete, so.
Yeah, the budget's complete, right?
Yes. Yeah, she, she's just asking to confirm that we're okay not changing it, then they'll vote on it and send over the MOU and then we can sign it.
Yeah.
But I, okay, cool, I just wanted to bring it up in case there's any issues. Alright, on to the fun part here, so I mentioned on Facebook and. On seven news yesterday that I was interested in working towards legalizing golf cart travel on our village roads. It has been. Fairly positively received, although I'm sure not everyone is on Facebook. There is some open question about the legality and how we have to go about it. I've done a fair amount of research about how we can do that and presented what I think to Jim Burrows. And he is going to get back to us on the particulars that we're able to control, how we would have to do it. And the legal options we have.
Just so you're aware, I received a phone call, I knew nothing about this. It would be nice if the board has. A little insight on these things before they go to a media source of any sort. But I got a phone call and that's how I found out about it and the person was irate. They are not in favor of this and I listened to it and had no idea what they were talking about.
So, yeah.
So it took me really off guard.
I, I forget that you are not on Facebook, I posted it on my page. A couple days ago, news called me yesterday and said, we'd like to talk to you about it, they talked to some people in the village. Generally, I'm I'm for cameras in the village anytime we can get Sacagawea Harbor in front of people, so they come, think of us more in business again. We got a few of the business owners on camera. I'm sure there will be people who don't support it, I'm happy to listen to them and and consider what their concerns are. So far, the only ones that I have been told on Facebook were questions about liability, which I understand and. In my messaging with Jim, I said what I was hoping for was. All village controlled streets. Sixteen and older have to have a license and you need lights if you're after dark. Yes.
I agree with Barb that finding out. Like being told on Facebook, any idea? I feel very strongly that you should have talked to us first.
Okay.
What problem are you trying to solve?
So I sent you, did you read?
Before we go any further, can we talk to our officer who's here?
There, is this legal?
I mean, Randy, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but I know you do a lot of the, the VNT, can you help us out here? As far as I know, there's certain ones that have to be registered. Yeah, I think it's legal.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm aware, the New York State traffic law says we can't, but there are.
Be registered and therefore can't be operated on.
Right, there are multiple references that I've sent Jim, and again, I I don't have the background to verify that they're legitimate or correct. To the ability to have local law. Allow. Golf carts on local roadways. So i- if if that's incorrect, then Jim will let me know, there are low speed vehicles which are basically. Fancy golf carts with a little bit more safety equipment that are legal, but. Yes. Yes, yeah, and there are.
Reached out to a friend of mine, he was a state trooper, he has been forever and asked him, and he said, only by local ordinance can we change. But he also said, they cannot be registered.
Yeah.
They cannot have a license plate, so I've been looking at it a lot of ways. Before we even, what are we trying, what are we trying to fix by allowing golf carts?
So I, I sent you, I know you were at work today, I I assumed you guys would see the the posts, but. I, I wrote a long post detailing why I think it's. A positive program or idea. Number one is it solves a lot of parking problems for the village, a cart fits in about half the space a car does. And a lot of people in the village, I know down in Morgues Beach, pretty much every house has a cart, they either rent one from Carl Chuck and Justin for the season or they own one. I know, I think some people down in Bolton's Beach have them, I know there are a few people who have driven them around the village in the past. But it's occasional and they're quiet about it, so no one really makes it, makes a big deal of it. It would also afford us the ability to run a much cheaper shuttle service between the school, the battlefield, the barracks. Main street and allow people to park farther away if they can without having to walk. It would also drop the speed, prevailing speed in the village, golf carts go about twelve to fifteen miles an hour. And I think we we have a lot of complaints about people speeding. And I think if we had a number of vehicles going fifteen miles an hour, it would necessarily restrict the speed of traffic. So all of, because this is a local ordinance, all of the details are up to us. And again, this is presuming that that the references to local ordinance is overriding the state rules are correct, and Mr. Burrows confirms that. But my understanding is that, yes, we can, we can write our own rules, we can say only certain roads, we can say only certain times. We can say you have to be sixteen, you have to have a license, you can't be out after dark unless you're equipped with brake lights and headlights.
How difficult this could be for them, I think you need to get some insight.
So there's a few different. Yeah, yeah, so we could have village permits that people had to apply for a permit to get the car.
To look into real deep.
I'm aware, yeah, there's a lot, I I'm not misunderstanding that this is simple. But I think for me, it didn't make sense to bring it to the board until I had an idea of whether or not the village was supportive of that policy. Because if if most people said we don't like it, then there's no point in discussing the ins and outs and no point in talking to Mr. Burrows and getting this detail.
I feel like now it's been on the news and everybody's talking about it and now we're putting like eh, we're the negative people and all of a sudden. You don't have a safety plan, who's gonna enforce things?
So all of those are things that, they're details to.
Like, we don't have parking for both trailers, how are we gonna do it if people bring, like, there's just a lot of things.
Absolutely a lot of details and I'm under no delusion that it's simple.
Shuttle service, are we looking to purchase?
No, I, I think. The, the goal would be to make it. A reasonable decision for businesses to operate, right? A lot of the restaurant owners have talked about shared delivery service in the village, that gets meaningfully cheaper if it can be done via golf cart.
There's the golf carts that can be registered, have, you know.
Yeah, and they're, and they're, so a low speed vehicle typically costs around twelve thousand dollars, the golf cart costs around three. And some of that is the safety equipment and it and it's to do with the the speeds that they go and where they're allowed.
I would just ask that before you put things out to Facebook and the media that you at least talk to, talk to your board. Right.
Sure, right, sure. Yeah, I think to me, you know, I, I communicated the idea on a very public place. I understand your, if you're not on that, I can make a note if I, if I poll the village for their thoughts on things in the future, I can make sure to send you the link to that. Because to me, I I I see the Sacagawea Harbor Facebook stuff pop up in my feed daily, so I rarely miss. You know, anything that gets posted there, but I'm probably on it too much.
I think Kelly gave a good point, you gotta be cautious because you risk dividing the board and the village when you make us the bad, if we say no right now.
So to be clear, I have no, I I have no expectation that we're voting on anything. My, my, my thought was, see what people think, it seems to be wildly popular. Now, I'm sure there are people who, there's people who don't like any change at all, and I'm happy to address their concerns and to talk about it and if. The majority of people think this is a bad idea, that's fine. But my, my thought is not that you guys are the bad guy if you don't make this happen, my thought is, I wanted to come to the board with a. Kind of bellwether of public opinion, so I could say, look, I think this is worth us putting time in. If I had just said quietly, hey, what do you guys think about hiring Jim Burrows to do this, you might say, well, we don't, and that's, that's fine, if that should have happened. I, my opinion is, you know, I was told, we ask Jim when we have legal questions. I'm not sure it makes sense to say whenever one of us has a legal question, we have to ask all five of us for the permission to ask Jim Burrows a legal question. But if that's what the board thinks, you know, we can talk about that.
It's an expenditure that the residents are paying for that we haven't talked about first. I'm, I'm not saying I'm against this, I'm just saying I have too many questions. And perhaps maybe you, I mean, I hate more committees, but because there's so much involved with this, I think it's too much for the five of us. To iron out safety plans, registrations, that's more work in the office.
So again, we, we can't begin any of that until Jim confirms that it's worthwhile. So to me, the, the order of operations that I had in mind was feel out the crowd, right? I posted something in reference to Mayor, I forget his name, and Oswego's article about open container and. Just to, just to hear, because a lot of people have asked me, hey, are you gonna do that? I'm like, well, it's absolutely not up to me. But I don't think it would be a problem, I know Kate Vincent has had no open containers for years and they don't really have any issues. I posted a reference to his article just to see what would happen and see what people would think, and a lot of people basically. Acted like I suggested we have a no, no law purge. And I I understand, it's, it makes people nervous and I didn't think it would be a super popular thing, we do it a couple times a year for festivals. But I was curious what the prevailing opinion would be, looking at Oswego's doing this. They out, they have thirty five police officers and five thousand undergrad students, it's a very different scenario, but it was interesting. I didn't think it was wise to push something like that forward because it seems like the public is not interested in it.
Yeah. So I'm not gonna belabor the points today, but the one thing, it just is very important. Just by doing that. Unfortunately, it skews the the opinion because you are the mayor. And people don't, as we all, all know, people don't, don't know about government structure enough. When you lead with that, I think that people take that differently, they say, wow, it looks like the village. Because the mayor is the chief spokesperson for the village. And 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 that's where we are in the problem, because, because, you know. Without the full board action, you know, we, we wouldn't want the mayor to get involved in something. Unintentionally, you know, we, we, we would protect the mayor from being involved solely. For, for some other incident, so in this case, where it's, it's something, it's an idea that you have. I think there are all five of us probably want a dialogue about it, but it's.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that.
And and because the, the, you know, the news piece, I, I hear you, it's a great piece for Sacagawea, but. There was no, there was no alternative opinion because you pointed out the three people that supported it. And that, that's really that objective in terms of the public opinion, so. I, I think we're all, I think we all want to have a dialogue about it, I think we might even come to some agreement, assuming we can. I, I think you're hearing the board just caution.
Yeah, I understand, I think for me, I, you know, I. I'm of the opinion that if I have thoughts that would, I think, be good for the economy of the village and good for the quality of life of people in the village. I have always been a very open person and I think it's. Appropriate to voice those ideas in public without having to run them by the board first. Now, if you want just an FYI, I'm happy to do that, I don't think it's appropriate to say, we're gonna vote on whether I can talk about this idea in public. However, I think.
I don't think that is either, I think.
No, I'm asking, I don't know what you're, you know, like.
We're saying you, you, we knew nothing. It'd be nice if you would run it by us, kind of get our opinions on it a little bit, see what we think. There's some of us here that have a lot of history, some of these things have been tried in the past, we may be, you know, be able to save you a whole lot of time and the village money.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I, I question whether things that did not work in the past are necessarily not going to work now. That I think is a, that is a way to to. Relegate yourself to not take any action if, on change, if if you say, oh, anything that hasn't been done already can't be done.
Saying, I'm saying that there's people on the board that have history, they can assist you and say, this was tried, maybe it can be done differently. We're just asking you to talk to us so that we're not sideswiped.
So I posted this publicly, I understand now that you, like, you didn't see it. I'm happy to send you an FYI if I post something, but my, I, I'm, I'm not clear if you guys are asking me to not publicly. Talk about ideas for improving Sacagawea without prior approval from you, because I don't think that's what you mean, but it kind of sounds like.
You have a board here that's working with you, if that's what you want to do, that's fine. I would rather you talk to us about it, if that's the way you want to conduct while you're here in the, in, in your political time here, that's fine.
I think I mentioned to, I know I mentioned to Mark before that I was looking at talking about golf carts in the village, I thought I'd mention it to one of the other of you. I'm sure I didn't mention it to you, Barb, because I've seen you out of meetings that much lately, but.
You did, I, but I didn't know you were gonna, and I think your disclaimer needs to be more, needs to be stronger.
Sure, that's, yeah, and and I mean, we talked about this earlier where I said at the very beginning, I would like. To start a discussion with the board about doing this. People don't read past headlines and that's something that they're, I can't control that without saying, well, I can't say anything that can't be in a three sentence or three word soundbite. Without people saying they think that I decl. or three word soundbite without people saying they think that I declared golf carts are legal. I don't think there's a lot of people that genuinely think they can drive golf carts today because of what I posted. And if I'm wrong, that I'm happy to address that. But I, you know, my, I even in the, in the post that I sent you guys today, um, when, uh, forget who told me, they're like, oh, I don't think everyone on the board's even seen it. But I know like Kelly, you're on Facebook. I see you, but so I just assume you see it. Sure. Yeah, and I, and I, to me, I think I'm of the opinion that those ideas should be debated by the public, not by the board privately, but I think.
Yeah, I do want public input. And I don't think this idea is necessarily a bad idea. And if that's what the overwhelming people want. I'm willing to work towards that. I just don't like the way it was sent out to us. I just, I would like the respect of being on the board that you chat with us about it first. If that's not how you want it, or at least just, hey, I have this idea. I'm gonna put it on social media. It's, you know, do you mind or? I just, the impression like Mark alluded to is that the public thinks that this is something the board is putting out and we really have to talk about it.
Yeah, no, and I try, if, and if, when you get a chance to read the, the beginning and the end are pretty clear that this is something that I am hoping to get the board to agree to. And that I understand there are a lot of details that need to be worked out. I actually close with saying, you know, don't, don't forget. If, if we can do this, we can also change the rules. So if something doesn't work, we can adjust it. And it's not like we write this in stone forever and can never change it.
Okay, so let's table it, talk about it later so we can move on.
Sure. So I, you know, Jim, Jim was working on it yesterday. He asked me a clarifying question or two today about what I had in mind. And I said, basically, here's what I think the safety and, uh, public. Uh, I guess like the side effect minimization policies would be. Um, I understand like these may be insufficient from the board's perspective. We may have to change them. They may want to limit it to certain streets at first or certain times or certain days or raise the age to eighteen instead of sixteen. Those are all questions for the board. But until he can confirm that this is actually something that a local resolution can accomplish. I didn't want to start getting mired in the, putting the recipe together that's, that I do agree will be quite complicated. I think the benefits of it are high enough that if done right, it's worth the effort. I think a lot of places are known for different modes of transport, you know, I you know, it might be too highfalutin, but like Mackinac Island, for example, for a long time, is that people go there because there are no cars, because you can drive these golf carts around. And something that's been talked about with the DRI is actually ma- making main street not have cars. That would present a problem for accessibility for people, um, that this would solve. And actually, we have accessibility issues now that this solves. When there's not parking on the street, someone in their eighties, they, like, the Fioratos down at the beach, they, they've come in on just a regular Thursday, not an event, not a weekend. And so we couldn't find parking close, so we went home. So I think. I, I'm not saying this is the only way to make parking better. I'm not saying any of that. I think, I think this accomplishes a lot of good things and comes with some complications that make it worth talking through. So there are a few. Yes, there are a few that have, uh, local laws that allow the issuance of permits for vendors. So, for example, um, they hard, they contract with private safe or private trash collectors and they let them use a golf cart that's not registered. So there is established precedent for allowing village to permit non-GMB registered vehicles on the roadways.
Public. So I don't know, do they have to break, have some local ordinance from their township?
I think they're basically, their area is considered a golf course.
Yeah, which I don't know if you can't have it registered.
Yeah, so seasonal golf cart insurance is about eighty dollars. I've already checked with, what's that?
That's if they actually get it, we.
Understood, yeah. I, the, the enforcement question is, is an open one, right?
It's more work.
You know, yeah, you know, uh, what Linda mentioned was like putting a local tag that, that way that if they're acting inappropriately, that we can say, hey, tag number eighty-six is screwing around. But so there's, you know.
Do you plan on doing like a work group of people to, like, one, if he says yes and that that can be done, are you gonna put a group of people together to work on this?
Oh, absolutely. You know, I, I don't have the capacity to write these rules. Like, that's also why I asked the public for. Yeah, absolutely. I understand. Yeah, it's, I, again, I, I'm under no delusion this is simple, but I think the idea of, um, you know, Brendan's here and he had mentioned he'd love to do, uh, audio tours and, and open air golf cart, work with the Historical Society to, to get some descriptions of different locales in the, in the village and sell a tour and, and go around, right? And, and it may be that we don't want, you know.
I fear that kids are gonna, you know, mom and dad are bound for dinner. Hey, can you pick me up on the golf cart?
Sure.
A little too much to drink and we all know that's gonna happen, so.
Sure.
But they wouldn't have a golf cart.
Yeah, and like. So, you know, the, and, and I think.
I think I would feel more comfortable if a business owned them because then they would be renting. They would be taking the liability and it's.
Oh, the village, I, I. My point was just, I wanted to, I wanted to gauge interest. I think I, I, I did not mean to make you guys feel like you couldn't deliberate about the particulars or even say no if you don't think the, the math adds up. I'm wanted to make sure that it made sense publicly. There was public support that would make it worth going through this process. Because I do think it absolutely will be, uh, complicated to do it right, to do it right. All right, but I don't think we, I mean, uh, I guess since we're going to the public comment, if anybody wants to, to comment on this. I'd be happy, uh, and then, and then anything else as well. Yes.
And tonight, I think I'm hearing places of business like it to deliver or whatever, so.
So I think the, 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 the rules would be to, to be established. I think that the idea was, is it or is it not worth exploring, was what I was trying to post. I, I, I wrote a long article about why I thought it was a good idea. Uh, there are five major points. There's parking, speed, um, business opportunities, people to do rentals and tours. As of right now, no.
Idea right now. It's an, it's.
Yeah, so this is basically a, a, a proposal I would like the board to consider. I did not ask them in a way that they're super pleased with. Yeah, right now, right now, it is not allowed. What we are talking about is potentially allowing it, rules to be established.
We don't know yet. We don't even know if it's legal yet.
Right.
Yeah, I understand, but I don't think, you know. Yeah.
Be back on what Mark was suggesting. Impact versus intent.
Right.
And I'm not thinking size.
Sure.
That's the, and that was just because of the impact of what you heard, not what was said.
Yeah. No, Sackens is a, is, I think, the exact right size for speed and inaccuracy of rumors. It's, it's, I have, I have accidentally started rumors I've heard later in the day, um, before here. It's impressive. So I understand, but, but the thing is, like. Read the first sentence. Eyes are very clearly, this is a proposal.
Tourism, it's gonna open doors to other businesses even that are just right outside the village, like across the village line. There's like old McDonald's up there.
I understand that.
Yeah.
You know, just, so it's gonna open doors.
Yeah, there, there's, there's, there's lots of complicated questions of whether or not you can cross different road, yeah.
Another question too about, um, does the village still own the property down in Ambrose Pass Legion, that big lot?
Yes.
Why funny you turn that into a parking lot?
It's been suggested many, many times. I've brought that up.
And shuttle people from there.
Brought it up many times.
Yeah, there are, there are a lot of, yeah. Yeah, there are a lot of things, uh, with the Market Square Park project. Actually, if you get a chance to poke through the, the big printouts here, right there. There's some really cool, um, up and coming projects to which are parking related.
Park, two parking lots.
And the thing is, they, uh, they will alleviate it a bit, but we're going to, uh, I think, continue to have parking problems. And as we, hopefully, as, as things turn around from COVID and we attract more people here, uh, we're seeing more people able to work remotely and, and stay here rather than just vacation here. So I think it'll be an ongoing problem of how do we fit the activity that we want to do here safely.
And with your beautiful walking trail, that's, if you sell that to some developer, you're just.
Yeah.
Bring in revenue with your meters.
You're talking, um, on the, yeah, yeah. Any other public comment?
So Alex talked about, uh, doing like a golf cart history report. So if we were gonna run, I think we could do it. It would be kind of in addition to the battlefield, focusing more on Madison Barracks. I know there's like, what problem does it solve? There is kind of like the need. I live by Madison Barracks. It seems like every time I look out my window, there's someone parked in the middle of the street and they're reading the historical signs. So I know there's all the history over there. And unfortunately, it's in that kind of weird distance where it's too far to walk. And so I think a lot of people see the battlefield, but don't really see it as historical Madison Barracks. And then potentially collaborating, like if the starting stock route is near downtown, having your club in one of the restaurants. So people who went on the tour could get discount to a local restaurant or something like that. So I know there's a lot of legal things to be worked out, insurance and whatnot, but for.
Can I help you out? Um, go to the hotel, talk to Tom Maxson, Tom's father, Murray. His electric vehicle fifteen years ago.
Registered.
As the hotel owner, registered those tours.
Yeah.
He used to stop in front of my house because I have a monument. And he would stop there and I would say, Murray, give me a buck for every time you stop in front of my house with your guests. But he did that all around the village, so there's precedent for that.
I think it was a good idea. And I think with businesses, again, it, it's a life. So I, I, I think that's a great idea. I, I'm not against that. And I also know from the past
We had them for a time, the ghost tours.
Oh, we did. We, the school did, well, those of you involved with the school, the school did the haunted house and then we did a haunted walk for like five years.
But you're talking about a ghost tour.
It was wonderful.
Right, you're talking about.
There is some interest.
Oh, regular. Anybody here before we go to the Zoom for public comment? Cool. Uh, I didn't see who.
Yeah, are you still doing public comment?
Yeah, go ahead, Connie.
Okay, uh, yeah, I just think, uh, you know, if you're planning ahead, uh, for something like the tours. I think I could, I think I was hearing Mark Basilio mention, uh, Murray Maxson's tours. That were done with, uh, on the, with the electric car. And then also, um, I don't know if anybody mentioned Seaway Trail. Because they also did tours. They did tours within the community, walking tours. And then, uh, they turned that over actually to, uh, the village. And out of the village visitor, visitor center, there were walking tours. So it might be interesting and helpful, actually, in planning. Just to look back at those and see the pros and the cons and what worked and what didn't work to make the next proposal successful.
Thanks, Connie.
Yep. Hey, how are you today? How's everybody? Great. Yeah, I have a, a statement I'm going to read and it'd be all within my, my time of limit. Uh, as you know, I have a passion and laser focused commitment for helping to save, restore and maintain historic structures and sites in the village of Sackens Harbor. I'm extremely concerned with a lengthy delay in finalizing the agreed upon transfer of the rapidly deteriorating and vacant historic stone hospital structures and grounds. In July twenty nineteen, over two and a half years ago, then Mayor Molly Riley convened a meeting of our local leaders to develop a viable solution to save and restore this threatened landmark structure. At that time, there was a large gaping hole in the blown off roof for months with no plan for remediation. Jake Johnson, the successful Watertown Historic Preservation Developer, attended that meeting and worked and voiced strong interest in purchasing and restoring the building. In September twenty nineteen, under statutory pressure from the Jefferson County Code Enforcement Office, the Sackens Harbor Area Cultural Preservation Foundation Incorporated, owner of the site, approached the village's local development corporation to secure a taxpayer funded fifty thousand dollar no interest loan to repair the damaged roof. A promissory note was prepared and legally filed by the foundation agreeing to pay back the loan as soon as the sale of the building to Jake, as mandated roof repairs were completed. A two-part loan payback agreement consisting of the proceeds from New York, uh, from the sale of the building to Jake Johnson's LLC and a twenty-five thousand dollar cash reimbursement from the existing New York State Parks Grant awarded in two thousand four was proposed by the foundation for LDC consideration. The board of the presentation indicated payback procedures and timeframe. Jake Johnson and the entire foundation board of directors also attended this meeting. The loan was finalized in December twenty nineteen and the roof completed by the end of twenty nineteen. At this writing, almost two and a half years later, the building has not been sold as agreed. And the two thousand four Parks Grant was revoked for nonperformance by the New York State Comptroller's Office in twenty sixteen. Although represented as available by the foundation, in the recorded note in their October nineteen, two thousand nineteen PowerPoint presentation, no loan funds have been paid back to the LDC to date. In August twenty twenty, LDC meeting, Dave Altieri, foundation president, indicated the property transfer would happen by the end of that month. That was nearly two years ago. It appears that all responsible and interested entities, New York State Parks, SHPO, the LDC, the Village Board, and the Foundation Board of Directors want this transfer to happen. Fortunately, Jake Johnson still has agreed to purchase and restore this building and assigned a revised purchase offer, noting intent. In closing, I implore all involved parties to immediately finalize this transfer to take advantage of the summer twenty-two building season. Village officials, the LDC, the foundation board, the adjacent property owners are very fortunate Jake Johnson wants to restore this building. His company has an exemplary track record of rehabilitating historic structures in Jefferson County and throughout New York State. Once the transfer is finalized and recording, the building will be restored to SHPO standards. Our LDC should receive most or all of their fifty thousand dollar loan back. The surrounding properties, Marina Inn, YMCA, Madison Barracks Marina, the Barracks Inn Restaurant, Canyon Properties LLC, et cetera, will greatly benefit from the significant and desperately needed restoration effort. I would also strongly encourage both the LDC and the village board membership to conduct an in-person stone hospital visit site, including a detailed interior inspection to better understand and appreciate the current deteriorated condition of this vacant iconic military historic structure and grounds. Thanks for your time and attention. I will email my verbatim transcript to the village clerk for inclusion into the permanent record.
I believe Dave said at our last meeting that it's in the lawyer's hands, right?
Yeah. It's not something we have any direct control over. Um, I, I have personally been employing my nagging skills at Bob Bogdan myself, but if anyone does know him, it would be great to get this moved along. It's pretty much ready to go.
But it's true that Jake Johnson.
Yeah, Jake's on board. Uh, his lawyer, Pierre Walton, has confirmed. It's just waiting on paperwork from, from Bob. Okay. Um, and, and David's confirmed the same. All right. Uh, any other public comment on Zoom? All right. Anyone else here? Uh, if Jake purchases it, he will, uh, he plans on rehabbing it as to his. Uh, if Jake purchases it, he will uh he plans on rehabbing it as to his purpose. It could be offices, it could be condos. I'm I'm not sure.
That was discussed back in 2019. I remember that we were trying to get a group together to try to save that for, you know, purposes, but Dave Alteri said that it's too far. So I just wonder, I had it for me.
Yeah, the.
Which is really sad.
Yeah. My understanding is that the $50,000 purchase price was largely picked not because that's the value of the remaining property, but because that was the the required amount to make the foundation whole, which got the loan from the LDC. And that it is um not going to be cheaper than building from scratch, but Jake is uh pretty historically minded and thinks it's a I think we all agree it it has potential to be beautiful again. Um, the exterior is quite nice and uh it's got some really interesting history, so hopefully we can get that done and uh get to work on it. Right. If there's nothing else, we will close public comments and move on to old business. Um, we can. Yeah, we, you know, I've I've gone back and forth on how to reorder the meeting to basically let people out sooner. Um, I've checked with a few people who are down at the bottom of this list and many have said um they they want to attend the meeting anyway. So I I'm not sure the best way to do it. If we do have anyone who um is required to be here and to give a report that thinks they could chime in early and then head out, give me a heads up. We will put you at the top of the billing next month. But I agree. I think I I think it's worth doing. Um, the problem is like, for example, Corey often chimes in on a bunch of issues. Same with with Lynn.
Kelly, you gotta save it for me.
Yeah.
I know.
She can, she can listen. You gotta be careful. Is your wife's name Gail? So you're.
From a financial standpoint, these guys charge by the hour. We say three hours, that's three hours according to our targets.
All right. So groundwater, um Lynn, did you, were you able to figure out if that catchment catch basin is low enough for a passive?
There's a two, two, two foot elevation difference.
Okay, so uh to catch everybody up, this is regarding uh the water in the adjacent lot of Ms. Slater. Uh, John Mayer, again, not the one you're hoping. Um, and I forget the neighbor on the other side. Um, they've had some issues with uh groundwater. There are a few other places that we have to kind of solve this as well. Um, generally speaking, the the question is whether or not it's the responsibility of the village to provide stormwater access. Uh, I think we want to increase the number of streets that have access to storm drains. But I I don't know the best way to go about accomplishing that besides uh kind of a long-term plan. Uh, I think it makes sense to prioritize streets where there have been issues um and uh complaints. Um, but I think we do have to look at the village holistically and set and figure out which streets don't have access, which streets have difficult access, and how much money we can spend on expanding that system and if we can. Um, that was something that we had planned on or hoped to send for that disaster mitigation grant um that we do not think we have time to do justice and also, we wouldn't even be certain we had access to it if we did pull it off without doing the hazard mitigation money, which we also don't need to spend now because the county's on it. So it's not an urgent problem to decide like the plan for, you know, stormwater expansion, but we may want to look into it over time.
Would you have a plan to help the residents that are?
Yes, so in in the, so the the question is, they have a storm drain across the street. Uh, they do not have one on their side of the street. Thus far, they have been pumping over the street and paying to do that. They could put in a uh Lynn, Lynn, I I don't know why I did. I was thinking of the great height versus the water height, but the basin itself is deeper. Lynn brought that up and double checked and there's, you said two feet. So we could have a a drain on that property where the low water is, but it would need to go under the street. And so the question is, is that something that those three homeowners should get together and pay together? Is there something the village? I I don't know if there's been precedence of this before, if we've ever put drains.
Did we ever answer the question of who's responsible for?
So.
We talked about the last meeting, so I didn't know if we had answered to that.
Yeah, my understanding from uh talking with Janet and Jim Corbin is that there isn't a provision for some reasonable amount of grading when you build. I don't know if we have a hard number on like two feet of fill is not considered significant elevation change. But it doesn't sound like the planning board themselves thinks that they made a mistake here. I don't know whether or not we should, you know, if you want to consult with our attorneys about whether or not this is something we should prevent in the future for future development or feel free to chime in.
I was on the plan where then others never would have asked him something he was reviewed and approved. But I don't recall any grading or fill as part of the plan and I don't think that's really been done. This the roads, the water, sewer, street lighting, that was all part of the review and then individual home construction gets the zoning permit. As a resident for a lot of years here, like, you know, I know there's a lot of groundwater problem in the area. That that's not a surprise to anybody, but I I think I'm not trying to blame the planning board and I'm not trying to blame the developer at all. But I personally not saying, but I feel like Joanne Slater has a point in that she's owned that since the mid eighties. And sure, there's been seasons where there's lots of runoff rain or cold weather well into March. But that lot does seem like it's a lot wetter than it's been in the past and I don't know the count of there's 8,000 new homes in some of fairly cycles of the impermeable surface ratio was significantly higher than it was for the 1980s.
Sure.
And that being the lowest peak land, it's uphill, it's like gray, the battlefield and a slight downhill harbor, but you have to get to watch on the street. You know, so I think she she has a point that she's owned it and this is the worst and and you know, some people they go, it's been a wet spring, you don't have, but over 30 years, this is new and the houses are new. I mean, they've been going on for 10 years, but it's almost a full subdivision now. And I feel like that has to contribute. I'm not saying it's not the cause. And I'm not saying the planning board shouldn't have, you know, did nothing wrong, but I I guess I'm just saying, I feel like she has a valid claim and if there's anything that the village could do to help. It's maybe some, I don't know, I didn't know about that.
Do you know, yeah, what it would cost to to bore under that road and connect the?
Or fill and like bring it so it could run to the streets.
I think you gotta be careful too, because whatever we do for uh Joanne, we gotta do for everybody the similar issue. My question, what's the process, Lynn? If we actually provide storm sewage or or whatever it's called, you know, two, is it, she have to do something to come to the uh to the drain or?
And then would you guys, I I personally don't like the idea of that.
What's the process? If we were to do something like that, what's, is it a two-step process? Is it what, would that solve the pro- problem? If we expanded our. So like, for for example, right, when when um the ballroom did redid their driveway, they put in a drain on their property. How did they connect that to the the storm drain on Main Street? So they they excavated that and connected themselves? Okay.
So can it be up to her to connect with?
She now has the option.
So right now it's across the street. So she, they don't have the ability to connect directly to a storm sewer on their property. They would have to go either.
Under the village.
A couple lots down, across or under, um, it's not Ray, it's. There, yeah. So that's, that's the issue is is like, do we want to establish a precedent of if someone wants a storm drain, we put it in, or do we want to put that in the plan and say, okay, let's actually look and see how many lots? There's only a few that have spots. It's Sherry Derwin's block there and.
That's a can of worms.
I feel like it's important to help the resident because I agree with Janet, but I I think there's gotta be some.
Well, it's.
Collaboration. Like, I don't.
There's a question.
Resident or I I don't want to pay for all of it.
Sure.
Help them. I want to help them.
How did we, how did we, when we put the stormwater in first, how did we decide which lots per, because like some lots have it right out front of their house on their side of the road and some don't. So it's already an unfair system and the question is like, was that done deliberately because we knew where the water problems were in the past? And if so, I don't think it's terribly unreasonable to say when new ones come up, um, we add to the storm system if we can. Um, but I don't, I don't know how it was originally designed or when it. Jim, you're, you've got the. You've been here since before that, I think.
Yeah.
Okay.
Village did what they thought was reasonable to fix the problem, but not the whole answer that, but they did it still, the village probably could do though into the whole problem.
Okay.
Kind of what Jamie would the B D F residents of what you were just saying to the B D F residents, but not the whole village.
Is it?
As a whole.
Is it something we should look at, including in our develop, our sub-development rules to 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 add storm drain? I I mean, we are doing that with the IA for for Madison Barracks. They're required to put in uh catchments and sufficient storm drainage. Is that because they're right next to the lake? Or is that something we added to our subdivision requirements after these other developments were built?
Typically, when you're doing development, depending on the size, disturbing over an acre, you've gotta do stormwater.
Okay.
Because of the purpose here, you've got first water quality and then water quality.
Okay.
And I I wasn't there in that subdivision, but I mean, typically they're looking at, you know, a new road, it's supposed to drain off the road. Um, and then that retention pond was there because of potential to build out of the developer. You know, the house is coming, then you treat all that volume, you know, hence like as Barracks, they're leaving up to the homeowners to do their own water quality treatment on sites.
That's.
It's a good treat everything.
So I I know with like, this is a much smaller thing, but with sidewalks, we offer a subsidized fee that a homeowner can ask to have sidewalks replaced. Is it something that like, if if we did say, um, let's say it was happening here on the village lot and we wanted to add a storm drain. Is that something we would do in-house or would we contract out?
I don't like the idea of doing it.
That's not the question. In-house. You don't like the idea of doing it in-house, so? Okay.
It's not, it's not in this. Case.
Yeah.
It's 200 feet.
Okay.
That's not a, that's not a day job.
Okay.
That's, that's a great link.
Do you, would you, I I, this might be overly specific, but like, do you think you'd cut the road or can you bore underneath?
I don't know. Just new four, six inches. Cause you have to know a rock is what it's in the case of stormwater, not boring.
Okay, so. So do we have an idea of what that cost would be, like even just pie in the sky ballpark, like 10 or $50,000? If she were to contract that herself, yeah, so that's.
Can we get to the estimates before the May 30th was special meeting and maybe uh based on the amount we can make a decision as to as to what assistance we might give or or not.
Yeah, I mean.
We're talking about, you know, I'm just making a number. If we're only talking about $2,000, you know, we might be something we can handle. But if it's in a $10,000 job, for example, it's a different story altogether. We just don't know.
Yeah.
Remember, this this may not be an isolated case and what we do for Joanne, we have to do for everybody else, so. Right, so I mean, that's.
But again, I I think we have a storm system in place and it was installed with some logic in mind of of putting it where it was needed. Um, if we're stormwater issues need mitigation has grown.
Right.
It's not crazy to think we would grow our infrastructure over time as we had to build more housing. Um, as to how to do that in a equitable way for the rest of the village. I mean, anytime we install anything that we don't install everywhere, there's a question of fairness.
Sure.
Um, you know, I, but I think I I will, I will send you guys my draft at first, but we're looking at, you know, I think we have public support for, and I think I already talked to all of you about it, a dog park, right? There are people in the village who don't own dogs and and they may be annoyed, but my hope is that we can raise the money and generally not spend public money, but there's always going to be a question of fairness when you do any infrastructure, right? The docks, not everyone has a boat, but everyone can get side benefits from our businesses doing better in the village and so you have to balance it. I I guess, is there a, is there a case that we would want to increase the footprint of the stormwater system generally? Because these issues aren't going anywhere if we keep building.
And that's why I would like to start the conversation.
And then we can, then we can prioritize and say, not just because Joanne was upset, but.
Right.
Let's look at a holistic survey and say, are there three or four places where it is legitimately worse than it used to be and worse than other places in the village and we'll prioritize those and set aside, you know, the $30,000 a year to increase the stormwater system over time. I I think that, I I don't know if that's something we've done in the past.
Is her, is her, that was three houses, people that are visit directly related to the new development that's in that area?
She is, she has claimed that it was never an issue until that house appeared. Now, that may be true, but also I would say at least a dozen places I've seen that I've never seen standing water before that were there this spring. This was a particularly dry summer until the second half, and then we got a whole summer of rain. And you can see that in the dank reports. Yeah, it is drying. But they pumped quite a bit. Um, and it isn't cheap to run a pump and that's partly why ideally it's 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 cheaper in the long run to to do the excavation for a gravity fed drainage because then it's free indefinitely, but. So I think the 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 best way to do it forward is to do what Mark said. Um, is this something you got, either of you guys can accomplish to get a ballpark estimate of that work?
Yeah.
Okay, and then.
$50, put on your tank.
Okay, that was quick. Um, so, yeah, I guess the question then is, do we want to explore increasing our stormwater infrastructure?
Like it's a good idea. Why don't we identify the problem area?
Have we done it in the past? The stormwater system was built as it is and then left, or have we added little regions? Okay, can we, do we know who would have that information about how we decided where to add it, who paid for it, what the process was?
Well, you got a next, we got.
He's got a former BPW.
Yeah.
He's like, oh, you're throwing under the bus.
I just came to see the wheels of government turn.
Well, you hear expertise and help us out.
It's pretty small.
What's your stuff? I think I'll handle it with Jan said if I could.
Sure.
When the crane proposed that development, let's go the other side of the street for water, did the development and he invited the stormwater runoff required retention time. That their drain down across water and street down and then the storm drain into the harbor. Crane did his job. The stormwater has to be dealt with. He put a line all the way or excavated rock all the way down to Brown Shores Road to a cover and that goes into the lake. It was already a natural drain there, but he deepened it to make it work so you get the flow. That was all approved by the D E C, that stormwater system, so. Yes, it did encompass that development, but I mean, if you're over this side 50 feet, you may get runoff that's not covered by that system.
Sure.
You're this way on here. I've been on a long time. That lot in Slater's side, well, it's been wet for years. It may be worse this year than before, but it's all been standing water.
Okay.
And as far as getting to the road on the other side, storm drain on the other side is supposed one. You got X feet of rock, you got pavement back, uh, DI on that side, invert with catch base and a and a cover. Talking a grant just for that, plus the piping, the road construction, we have ET 10 grade.
I'm behind the ship here, over here, and I've never seen that protection pond so full in my life.
Lynn was talking about this uh the other day. You've you've got some.
Wild life.
That was a, that was a grant from Jim Wright. With that storm drainage pond and again, Crane was involved.
Okay.
He made that pond over there, but the grant was half a million dollar grant from Jim Wright. They put that storm drain from Monroe Street all the way to the harbor. They put that storm drain from Monroe Street all the way to the harbor. And that's all of all that mess over there, I mean. The whole streets on, all those houses on the road, it gets to flood right up to the floor. I mean, the village has been. You know, trying to be ahead of the game, but.
Sure.
How much money do you want invested back for the money to?
Yep.
Solve everybody's little problem. And to them, it's a big problem.
No, understood. Yeah, I mean, that was my first, my first comment when, and. I, I don't even think it was Miss Slater or someone else said, like, I pay my taxes. And I'm like, yes, but if we pumped everyone's basements, they would be a much, much higher rate to cover that cost. I don't think I have your number. Just trailer in the, trailer in the boat. That thing can move six hundred gallons of.
To me, it sounds like a long range strategy.
Yeah.
We've got to talk about that, mention that.
Yeah.
Uh, I think we should do that in storm, storm waters, uh, issues or the storm water system should be a topic. I mean, we, we make communicate with them to say, we are looking into it, you know, is, I'm not sure they need. If they really wanted to hear that we're working on it, they don't necessarily want the problem solved tomorrow.
She does, but also that's.
My yard was flooded all the time. I wanted.
So.
So I get where she's coming from, I just don't have the answer.
Let me ask you one more question and then I think we can move on, or at least I'm done, um. What would the process be if they wanted to pay for that to be done? If, if the three homeowners said, you know what? Fine. We don't want to wait for this study to make, to make sure it's done fairly throughout the village. We just like to pay to get this thing solved. What would be the process? Would they need to talk to the D E C? Would they need to book the planning board?
So they'd have to get permission from us to cut the road.
Yeah.
And they have to hire contractors.
Is that something we could help them? Like with the logistics, if they've paid for the actual work? Okay, so maybe in the short term, that's what we tell them is an option. Okay. So. So, so we can at least present them and say, look, it, we're working on a longer term solution, but in the interest of fairness and. Not just playing whack a mole with issues, we, it's going to be a long process. If they want something fixed soon. We have confirmed that they could do a gravity fed system based on the elevations. We think we've got a. And they, and they very well, very well, maybe what they do.
Yeah, sure.
The other, the other lots are that it's the block where the town barn is. It's, it's just the very middle of that is very low. Yeah.
You're not like getting into the different storms you're there.
Yeah, it's a whole different area. You know, and it's, there's nowhere to connect to it. That's not through, I think, a minimum of three properties from where the issue is. So. Um, all right. So, and do you guys think that like the ten thousand dollars is, is ballpark enough that we can tell them that?
Just say, we, we.
Yeah, okay. All right. I will, I will send an update to, uh, Johnny and, and Miss Slater and. I kind of get the, the other neighbor's name because I can remember it. Um, and just give them an update so they have an idea of what's going on. Yeah, obviously, yeah. Yeah, but my thought is, I don't think it's unreasonable for us to provide a little bit of. Logistical support and design guidance for them so that they can just pay for the actual work. Um, because it does improve village infrastructure as well. It's not, it's not nothing for the village to have that done. At least a few thousand less mosquitoes, right? So. Um, okay. Any other questions on the groundwater? All right, then we have the Madison Barracks Infrastructure Agreement. I think the plan is pretty simple. We didn't get all the information we need in time to review it. We more or less do now.
We had a good meeting Thursday. I think, I think everybody's done now. I think it's just being signed off by both council, right, everything? And, um. So, uh, the last piece was. The payment. And what, what were you saying?
I said the maps, but.
The map, well, of course, but it's just a matter of.
Yeah.
Just finishing off those maps. I think everybody's in agreement. And, uh, so, uh, Madison Barracks, we know their final bill, which is just. Uh, in addition to the thirteen thousands, forty, over forty-two hundred dollars. Madison Barracks will be here tomorrow with a check for forty-five hundred dollars. And they say, please, that's it. We're done. So, um, we'll get you the IA that's the final.
Can I ask a question? The draft that we got last night, there was new language. I was under the assumption that we were going to be doing the trail and we were going to be doing the seawall, but I see that there's language in there now. Are they covering that now and they're paying for it?
The only trail that we're doing is behind Mill Creek Apartments, which we had agreed to do in the past.
Right, that's something in there about the trail.
The trail is the other new trail that's along.
They're doing that in Lou sidewalks.
That was in the original agreement last time. And then.
Well, the fence is on the back. The, the new one is along Pike, is it Pike or Wallen? Wallen Road.
We're still all this at the Libri on traditionally still in place. So you have to get the fence and all that.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Have you been able to see that already?
All right, let's, let's make sure we have the actual final copy. We'll print one out and get it to land. That's a good call. Um, but the goal, hopefully, uh, pending any. Craziness is to get this approved on the year end meeting on. Three Tuesdays from now. Mike's not here. Any, any questions about Madison Barracks? All right. To new business, uh, the Can-Am event application. Are you?
Yeah, has anybody got any questions on it?
I do. Question, but a comment. It's, it's. One thing they didn't deliberately do is just because everyone's going to think of. Authorize open container.
Right, I was gonna say, we need to do open container.
Right, so. That needs to be done. Also, I would, um.
If we do use the, like, I don't know if there's a pre-written resolution from the fore, we did talk about changing it to Main Street instead of Ambrose this year, closing the whole street.
Right, that's in here.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's.
And also, um. You know, the anticipated crowd is going to be more substantial.
It's going to be.
Um, and so I know that they cite about ten water potties.
Did they increase it? I didn't get to the last meeting.
They all agreed to the. To, in, they would increase it. I don't know if it made it into the application, but I don't think.
Okay.
But what is the new number?
Ten more?
No, not ten more.
Ten was the original number. So if this is ten, then they did it. But I think they were all on board that.
I thought I did, but let's double check.
Also, you had the LBC meeting, were you able to discuss parking at the LBC property? Band is here.
I did not ask them. I didn't know that that was an issue. Um. I have to give them an update on a couple of things next week, so I will check in. I don't think it'll be an issue, particularly if it's dry. Obviously, we don't want people getting stuck if it's been wet.
Right.
I think we're going to try and do, yeah, funding mortgages too, and then hopefully the school a lot again.
Right, well, I mean, the LBC is walking distance.
Right, true.
You don't have to do shuttle, you don't have to do anything.
They say at least ten, so they cover them. It's expensive. We could have, you know, three, four thousand people in here. Ten would not.
Not be sufficient.
Yeah.
Cause they're also scattered, you know, so we've got to work on that. I also would like to, and I haven't talked to them, but, you know, um, I was involved in, I don't see the scale. I was involved as a road director in, uh, Woodstock in Rome, and one of the key pieces that county needed was a help. We have three, four thousand people. You need a plan for emergency services.
Yeah, we, we had a little bit of a snafu at, uh, Whoville because a kid.
Yeah.
Uh, cut her head open and fortunately, her mother was a nurse and she just needed the supplies from the police car to get it done. Which was lucky, but, uh, I think we want the EMS there.
Yeah, I'd like to work on just a, like a bit of a plan.
I believe.
I see that they're asking for an ambulance.
Yes, they are.
The EMTs of. Are, are on for Can-Am.
I think it was brought up at a meeting that they were asking for it. So I think they're aware.
We'll get it. I wanted to make sure. Also, um, as we discussed in the last board meeting, there weren't a lot of people in the last board meeting, but so I'll reiterate, you know, fireworks is. The schedule is blocked, but thank you at eighty point and, um. You know, right over the water, so it'd be great. Um, we just, uh, want to make sure that, and the fire department was there, so you saw them once there. Give, he gave his personal thumbs up on it, but I want to make sure the fire department does it formally, right? So we need to have. And things ought to be probably done in writing, like the request should be done and writing from Can-Am and their, and then, uh. Granting of such should be done. So everybody is clear.
Do they have to sign off?
They should.
They have to sign off at the fireworks company, actually. Fire Department does.
I just know there's another event that the fire department had to come in and they had to sign off.
Are you, they need to sign off on your flares?
Or the standby suppression unit?
That's, that will happen, but you're right. We, we'll request it, you request it and we'll, and we'll make sure we get that response. So I know that there's going to be probably three, three pieces from the fire department. The fire boat will certainly be out in the harbor and they already mentioned that, makes a lot of sense. And the apparatus on shore at Harbrook site. And then, you know, the EMS, I mean, again, we have to take their lead because they can't get stuck downtown, so they have to.
It also depends on the weather. I mean, if it's ninety degrees, three thousand people, somebody's going to get heatstroke, you know, like.
They'll probably stay at the station and then just be ready to go.
They do that or they kind of get behind the visitor's center.
I mean, is one sufficient? Do we want to talk to Gilfoil?
I would rather, I'd talk to our department.
And see what they think, because the, the hard part is we don't have a good. Weather on people.
No, we don't.
You know. On standby. That's fair.
I would say relay that message, if that's what we're thinking, is that we'd like them to be physically present, walking around with that.
Yeah, now work with them and make sure everybody's fully geared. Other than that, so Port Pies and, 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 uh, fire department, I think we're. This is very thorough. Well done. I think it's missing a map and a route for all the golf carts. So too soon?
Hey, that's, listen, that's part of why I thought it was good, is everyone loved it last year. Too soon, okay, we'll wait for that. We're going to add a little map. Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Oh, that's silly.
So I'll make a motion to approve the Canyon Festivals event application along with opening or lifting the open container. Within the boundaries of the Canyon Festival. Thank you.
Right, any other questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Right.
Can I ask Peggy a quick question? Peggy, did you get my email on with the event application for the eighteen twelve run? Because it's not in here.
I thought I saw it.
Yeah. When did I send that? A while ago. Couple of weeks.
You're saying it's spoken?
No, not spoken, the eighteen twelve run. Cause, um, they want to start everything before, before that.
Yeah, I thought I saw it. Maybe I just saw the advertisement.
Well, that's the thing is I told them not to advertise until it got approved.
Okay, I don't see it, but I'm not sure what to search for.
Okay.
Um, is it something they need to have done?
We should get that done so they can start advertising.
I mean, do we want to?
So we'll put it on the thirty first. We gotta look at it, you know. Look at it and the police look at it to get them approved. So if we put it on for the thirty first.
They should do it. What's, what date is?
Yeah, it's in August, but they like to advertise way ahead of time.
Right, so can we put that on the? The agenda now so we don't forget to do it. Awesome, thank you, B. All right, good to go to the Bussies event. I have the request for Bussies for the municipal building. Oh, I'm sorry. I assumed this was that. Okay. Um, yeah, let's, we'll do that next then. Um, I have not looked it over. I thought it was the one I read before.
It's pretty standard as it is every year.
Very smooth then, just like the other.
Thirteen's kind of in.
Except every time we get these, we're, we're always, you always have to ask this question.
Yeah, I know. Did they review it?
So shouldn't, uh, shouldn't police?
We just got it today, so I'm sure they did know.
Okay.
So I don't know if we can vote on it.
We can vote contention as you want, but if they don't, we don't need to. If they just got it just today, I'd rather not vote until I get their sign off, the, uh, fire and police.
Yeah, again, it's a late.
Yeah, July thirtieth, okay, so we can't, we can't afford to.
So we'll do it on the thirty first, get it.
All right, the Bussies, the Bussies requesting. There we go. Okay, so I thought that was the other event. Any questions on this, guys?
Oh, the twenty students.
Where, where's it, I mean.
It's going to be at the visitors.
No.
Yep, it's here.
So is it going to be an issue? Okay.
One is okay, I'm okay with that.
We don't want to be in the way, one.
Okay, so this is their backup rain day.
Yeah.
Or rain location.
Right. I just.
Good to go?
Well, we can. Yeah, I'll make a motion to allow the. Bussies Career Camp to use municipal building or be in stand, I guess, on the twenty second of July.
All in favor? That twenty first student's getting.
Twenty first guy is cut.
Yeah. All right. So, and. Don't worry, everyone, we're halfway through the agenda. All right, on the trustee reports, Deputy Mayor Bolton, yeah.
Oh, let me get to it here. I talked to you about the LBC. Talked about Canyon, the library. They are having their Great Lakes poetry. They had their workshop or their contest, so that award ceremony is coming up. So this weekend is the Great Lakes Poetry. The Art Inspires Poetry, Poetry Inspires Art workshops with, uh, Greg Lago and Dale Hobson. Still has a couple of seats left, but only a couple. So if you want to get them, then you need to contact the library. Twenty plus students from. Uh, the school came their teacher for programs on invasive water and quality endangered species with the D E C grant. Um, and they're getting ready for their summer reading program, story walks in the battlefield. So far, they just, the first one is June four. So the library's open. Please visit it and they're, they seem to be doing well, so. Uh, and that's really about it because I hit on my other topics during the meeting. Thanks.
You guys would be short, it's both like people who are here to report on their own, so I don't know about most. Most of the caffeine, and we'll let her talk about visitor center. The fire department, um, I just want to touch on the road report, there's seven fire calls in the month, April, one MBA and eighteen EMS calls. Um, side note, I do know that the three teenagers that took their EMS practicals, all three of them passed, so that's good news for them. And they're ready to take this state part of that. So. They do have an Owens Donalds Farm event coming up May twenty first. They changed, um, from the fourteenth. So if you, if you've seen the fourteenth date. They're doing a fire appreciation day in which they're going to give half of the fifty percent of the proceeds to the fire department. Um, and so they're going to have, uh, the EMS, the ambulance out there in a fire truck, just for like public relations. Um, they do that every year. They also received the D E C grant for the purchase of wildland fire equipment. Um, and they were able to purchase four sets of wildland protective gear. I think it was a matching grant. So if they spent three thousand, they got fifteen hundred of it back. So they were able to get four sets of gear to that.
Is that like for forests?
It's wildlife fire. Yeah, special gear. May twenty first.
Ron, you're up, sir.
All right, let's start with the baseball field update. We do have clear and good coordination between the village and the town. And we made significant progress on the baseball fields. Field one is near completion and we ready by the end of the summer, which is good news. For field two, we're working through an issue. Uh, there's basically a sand and clay mix on the infield, which isn't conducive for good baseball conditions. So more to follow on how we're going to fix that one. For field one, that'll be ready there to the summer. We're planning a dedication, uh, opening of that field later next spring. Moving on to, uh, baseball and softball. Both seasons are off and running. Good participation throughout the village for both of those sports. Good news story here is that the softball, uh, players of the village have a league. In the years past, you know, we haven't had a league. We struggled to find a league. So this year we joined the Northern New York Softball League, youth softball league. So, uh, hopefully we can foster that relationship and continue that in the future. Let's talk about summer rec programs. So they have been locked in. In your packet, you see there's a tripod or a pamphlet highlighting the details of the summer rec program. Basically what you're looking at is a carbon copy of last year. Uh, and this will be advertised via the school and through the, uh, village website. So highlights of the actual summer rec program, four sessions, first session soccer camp, one on one, second session is a STEM and sports camp. The third session will be a battle, battle games camp, kind of works on teamwork, problem solving, that type of stuff. And then the last session will be a sports camp, which we introduce to the children, you know, an overview of all the sports. So each camp is about a week long. Uh, it's open to the public, but the residents of Second Harbor gave a tremendous discount.
What is the age or the different age groups or?
Yeah.
Oh, in front, I see. Yes.
Uh, we want to talk about the skate park right behind us. Uh, the park and rec community has, they have earmarked some funds to update some of that equipment. Some of the equipment, as you guys know, is borrowed, stolen, broken, dilapidated and dangerous. So we're going to order some equipment directly. But there is an issue I need to work with the village on, which is the concrete back there. Uh, the concrete's cracked. It's dangerous. Uh, we got to come together and kind of find a solution to fix the concrete back there, uh, for the summer.
I walked out there today because Paul asked me if you had talked about that. Do you know, is it like something we can just patch? Or I'm not sure which areas, is it just the seams he's concerned about?
I think it's just the seams, especially for skateboarders, obviously. But maybe later sometime we'll go back there, we'll take a look at it, maybe find a quick solution.
You strategically placed the new equipment over the crack.
If you're going to have a jump, you can jump over the crack.
Was that? I think that's skating rink. It'll be a skating rink where that's planned, yes. Any questions about park and rec before we go on L D C?
Are we, we're go for the new bocce court?
Yes.
What is that?
We've allocated money.
Breaks through the ceremonial polino or?
Brick's going to do that. Yes, he will. Uh, so I don't know. Maybe. Very cool. So, but yes, we are going to go forward to third bocce court. There is, it's a great interest in bocce.
Yeah, I thought you were surprised.
Well, no, it's neat because what you do is you go replay bocce. At the same time, you tend to your carrots in the community gardens. It's a two for one.
Just don't get it wrong. Smash the carrots. Exactly right.
So let's talk about the L D C. Not a lot. We've already talked about the sale of the property, the Kent property on the Southern Parcel for the Northern Parcel. So we're considering different options right now at this time. And that's really, as far as I want to elaborate, I would say we are in discussion with the state about a potential proposal. But again, we're looking at other options as well. So more to follow. This is, as Alex had mentioned before, the L D C got together to talk specifically about this this morning. We've got some future discussions to happen in the next couple of weeks. More to follow. Move, we want to do with that Northern Parcel.
Can I add, uh, heritage area, as we indicated last year, we provided advice, advisory capacities to the village board. And we have, I did send Alex to this this afternoon. I got this week, Heritage Area worked on this, um, all last week. After our last meeting. So it's, it's really our opinion and advice on the northern property of the L D C and what the village board ought to do. And so I just encourage you all, read history about the piece and its recommendation based on archaeology and a number of other things.
Right.
You would do that, or I could do that, but I just actually have.
Yeah. Oh, you, I didn't know if you copied it.
No, I do not.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't, I saw it, but I didn't.
Yeah, it was an accident. It wasn't important. I didn't know that you guys had met. So, but it's okay. It's really for the village board and then, well, as a courtesy of the L D C, but it's.
We do, yeah.
A couple, pretty soon.
And that's all I have. Any of your questions?
Cool. Uh, okay. So part of the heritage area was, was just that. I also attended along with the mayor, uh, the, uh, the event, uh, by Noah, uh, was it? Really good event on the history of, uh, you know, the war of eighteen twelve. But Tim Abel, who's also a heritage area advisory board member, talked about, uh, the archaeology. It's pretty interesting. Uh, and, and every time I go, and I think that I've heard enough about the eighteen twelve, the war of eighteen twelve, I learned something new. So I learned about, I joke, I learned about the, the, uh, what was it? Palisade, the location of the Sacketts' Palisades. So very interesting. Um, and it is on that land, uh, right where Joanne Slaver's property is. And there's actually what Tim, uh, said is probably a magazine there in between the White House and Joanne's house. So he's already done excavating there, which I laughed and I thought, is that the problem?
Maybe the water is good. If there's munitions down there, it'll dampen.
We, uh, are talking about, uh, and I don't have a number yet, but as you recall, we talked about, um, Dr. Abel has, uh, a lot of artifacts that he wants to store. And, um, then the historical site is off of the bank building. And, uh, so the historical site will be forwarding a number that they just need in terms of a bit of payment from the village to lease that area, you know, for as long as we, is, is needed. But we ought to think about.
Maybe for like public display or just storage?
No, it'd be for storage. But that, that leads to the next point. That is, we need to do a regular rotation of this stuff. And so we want to do some long range planning again about what we do with our artifacts and how we involve the historical site specifically. So more to come on that, but you know, certainly we're looking to partner with that.
Dave also talked about moving the artifacts that are in the cottage.
Yes.
Over there too, so that they get out of the cottage where it's more, um, weather safe and.
Yeah, it's very.
To the bank, right?
Yeah.
More storage.
Uh, climate.
Yeah.
Let's see, uh. Pickering Beach, uh, Camp Beacon House. Two Pickering Beaches, uh. When's that open? June twenty third, so every month, right? Yeah. Nothing new on the Noah strategy, but as I said earlier, um, I haven't made, attempting to make contact with the key person in, uh, historical preservation. And I believe that person is the key person here. So. Nice, sort of, what, we'll talk about this now or separate?
The, um.
Resolution that I sent over.
Yeah. Yeah. So, um, Shannon and I both attended the, uh, Clean Energy Communities Talk at the Tug Hill. Not Symposium, but event, Tug Hill Local Government Conference. And they kind of outlined, um, a very convoluted point system, uh, to earn credits as a village towards being certified as a clean energy community. Uh, Dave El Terry has already started working on that. That was why we had that resolution before that was like the, the, the kind of odd language about like, we do believe in climate change and, and its implications that we all, uh, voted on maybe two months ago, three months ago. That was part of the requirements to be able to access these points, some of which are just grants right off the top. So one, for example, was if we bought a electric vehicle, which we did try to do, although it looks like all the Ford electric trucks are sold out until next year. So John Gleason may not get his, but if he had, we would actually be, uh, qualified for five thousand dollars.
We might be able to get him.
Oh, you're, you're two minutes early. We're not supposed to get silly until it's two hours old meetings. Um, so the resolution basically, uh, says that we will benchmark our power usage. It's already public data. We don't have the ability to not disclose it. It's just that this resolution means we will put it together in the format that the, the clean energy, uh, communities requirements prefer, so that we can show that we have this data to benchmark, so that as we improve. I don't know if these are LEDs or not, but as we move things like, if we change the thermostat out, we can actually demonstrate that we changed our usage. So it's a resolution to basically say that we will not provide any additional public data, but reformat how we provide it in the way they want. And they give us a thousand points. And the points count towards certifications, which as we get, do you remember the numbers? It's like some number of thousands of points. We get fifteen thousand dollars of clean tech money.
Things we've already done.
We do. So we will get points for the lights. We will get points. Yes. Um, I'm not sure. They actually give points for adding chargers because they, they want to. So it's not only reducing electric use, but offsetting emissions. So that will increase our electric use, but the idea is that it will, uh, lower our emissions because we're incenting people to get, uh, get rid of their ICE vehicles and move to electric. Uh, so there's. Yep. Very good.
Still waiting for the two. We're supposed to get the state.
Well, aren't they going on the new parking lot anyway? Are they coming here? Oh, okay. 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 Right. Yeah.
Thought we had up to four.
That was, uh, twenty thousand and three and from actual grid.
Okay. Yeah. And same thing with the lights. I think Adams Road and a couple of others that are out are on the punch list. They're supposed to arrive soon. But there's a number of things. Um, the plan is for, I think Shannon and Dave to work together to try and like roadmap the points that we want to go for. There, there are some that are easy and there's some that are quite difficult. Um, and then there's like tiers where we get money for certain points. So there's a, there's not a right way to do it, but there is definitely a, a, uh, writer or more right way than our, and a, and an efficient way. So they're going to try and plan like which things we should go for and which order, um, to get the early wins quickly. Uh, because there also are some limits, like to the number of communities that can get them. Uh, the North Country has very few communities that are already getting them. So it's unlikely we will be late to the game as long as we keep moving. So this resolution is pretty simple. If you want to vote out tonight, we can. Um, we can also punt it until you read it, but it just essentially means that we will record the public info. Okay. We'll throw it on the thirty first. Uh, it should be an easy, easy vote once you've read it through. Cool. I didn't actually realize there was, there's more pages to the front when I saw it. So, but I, I've seen the, the details. The nicer, yeah.
And lastly, um, we often meet the visitor's center. I'll be talking about visitor's center, uh, and it's opening, um, and visitor's center, according to our treasurer, has a few thousand dollars, uh, left. And so, um, they have some requests that they are going to ask for. One is, so they got a laptop, but now they have two staff and they have a very old desktop computer.
Very old.
Was that?
It's very old.
Very old. So.
It heats the whole place.
Yeah, three quotes here in the lowest is five hundred fifty dollars for a desktop computer. Uh, they have a couple of different sandwich board signs that they want to get, um, each about four hundred dollars a piece. Three and four hundred dollars. Um, two hundred dollars for, uh, monitor, a large monitor from Quail. So the desktop is one thing, but the monitor is the other. A new office chair. Boy, I said that office chair. Again.
It's not as bad as Ron's.
Some, and some software for a hundred fifty dollars, Photoshop, because she's doing a lot of work. Again, if you want to add any larger race, dry erase board as well. So on nineteen hundred dollars, say about twenty eight or dollars.
A quick thing, um, we approved the purchase last month of IMAX. I kind of revised my plan. I wanted to confirm with you. It's cheaper to get the actual laptops, same power and a thirty two inch monitor. Then it is to get the desktops that would allow both our clerks and our treasurer to work remotely when needed. Um, and actually be net cheaper than getting an IMAX. If you, it's about seven fifty for a, I, I always buy my, my own, these are all Mac refurb. They're twenty percent off. And they are the same model and they have a lower failure rate. So, so if, I just thought it's something, if, if I was actually, uh, Peggy reminded me today that, um, we have someone starting in two days. And I should have ordered it already, but I have not. So I don't know if it makes sense for me to just put the order through for four of those laptops and four of the monitors. Thirty two inch monitor for a hundred fifty dollars on Samsung, fancy curved one. Right. So I just, I could just do both to, to get it all done in one shot. So that it'll come together, the same model. It'll help because we can install the software all at once. If that makes sense. If it makes sense, a laptop with a monitor. And so basically I usually. Yeah. And you don't have to move it. Um, it just, it allows you the ability to, if in the future you need it. You can, you know, I generally, when I use mine, I have a docking station with like a real keyboard and a mouse if I'm working for a long period of time. So the laptop and the monitor, I didn't add in a mouse and keyboard, but it's well under the price. You can just plug it in. Yeah, I, I like the dock, but it doesn't matter. Um, so it's just something I thought, since I'm about to purchase those, I wanted to confirm with you guys, you're cool with me swapping for desktops. It's, I think there's no loss in functionality and it's cheaper and it gives you mobility. So I. Yeah.
What is it used for? It's, I mean, the visitor's center, we're talking about just the, you know, um, if we've got any partners that are coming and being a response. Okay.
Okay.
My question is, is it in the budget?
Yeah. Yeah. And this is, yeah. So it's, I think it's about a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars more to do the Mac laptop that we're doing for the clerks and for the treasurer. And to do a desktop machine. I think they, they're, they're better built than most of the. Okay. Is that okay with you? All right. I'll, I'll try to buy them tonight. If not, I will definitely do it tomorrow. Um, I will text you because there's color choices.
Why? You're either for a while.
I mean, somebody's got to pick a color. So, okay.
Um, just last thing I did attend to. Fire Department. That was a great event. You know, that, um, we had a donation of breakfast for the fire department by, uh, that was pretty cool.
Yeah, they did. They put on a really nice breakfast.
Yeah.
Awesome.
And, uh, they.
What did she, what did you, what'd she have?
She had breakfast casserole and juices and pizza, breakfast pizza.
Very cool.
Good show for the fire department and.
Some of them also came and had breakfast.
Oh, nice.
And, uh, you know, did some demos outside, you know, like, um, asked for a tour from. And, uh, all good, all good. So, uh, you know, it's very impressive. As usual. So, and that's all. Oh, I should say that Kathy has, I want Kathy to do.
We need to make a motion on that spending.
Thank you. You heard me. We, we didn't.
Yeah, we need to make a motion for her.
Yeah, so hers is gonna reduce by the computer amount. I'll purchase it. We can either do a transfer or
Right. So it's, Ron and I were like, did I miss it? I didn't think we did it.
So what, mine is just subtract out the computers. All right. Jim, are you, are you, by the way, you're done with Will and the two? So this is, this is your last ever treasures report? Okay, all right. I was gonna say, I don't know if you want to savor the all right.
April, a lot of revenue stuff come in. But cash flow, you know, like some municipalities, they'd be in a buying because I'm going through the list, like the first one, sale tax, about 600,000 total came into the village this year in sales tax. The good thing about the pandemic is a lot of people eventually stayed home in the county, so municipalities actually got more sales tax revenue than they otherwise would have because, you know, people travel and on vacation and everything. So we were well over our targeted revenue for sales tax. And the same with mortgage tax, you know, people are always, you know, redoing their mortgages because of interest rates going down. So the village gets that now it's going up, but you know, the past year, so we actually doubled our mortgage tax revenue from one. The county also reinvested 30,000. And that's for people who didn't pay last June, so village taxes, the county takes the village toll, but not until now, from last June. So that was over 30,000 and that check, that the check is in your paperwork, okay? Lynn, in the EPW, you know, when they stockpile scrap metal and everything, they turn, they stockpile it, then they turn it in. And that scrap metal that Lynn and his department guy was over $4,000, you know, so so that's what's there, that revenue came from. The voters, six of them were 900 and Lynn put more real motor on Auctions International and that got over 12,000 for the village, you know. Originally, the village was thinking they get two to three to five thousand, but putting it on auctions and that's the net price of the village. They take out their percentage before they give the village that check. So that was over 12,000. People, they, they reversed the village by 1,000. This actually came out of the LED lighting or spinoff of that our electric bill at County 75 Water Tower was thought to be in T Mubu's name, but it wasn't the village's name because the village water tower is in the village's name. All for about two years, just we had to pay and that stuff is in your full we had to pay because we were actually being taken, you know, the platoon agency.
Oh, because they never sent us the bill.
Yeah, because the bill was never in our name. So that showed the reimbursement with the village paid in February. So that was a washout. Then going down the list of that's my package to for the board to approve. 86,000 was turned over to the county for re-levee water and sewer bills. And that gets added to people to want taxes, but the general fund makes the water sewer funds whole for that 6,000. And then we'll get that the general fund gets reimbursed when people pay the taxes after doing one. And you can see the difference amount of the different areas that the water sewer funds get the re-levee from. And before the re-levee amounts were turned over to the county, you can see what the village residents reimbursed people. The town quarterly water bill was just under 23,000. And the last revenue you should see just under 3,000 was turned into the village for baseball signups. So you can see just 400,000 came into the village and that showed up the dispersments are your next page, what was you can see the cash flow just over what the village has of that in you can see your packet reimbursement, one came in for the ready for, I mean, you can say, I mean, the check 408,000 came in from 429,000 that was submitted. 408,000 is 95% of the 429,000 that the village submitted. So and then you can see the last page is the rec. So 50,000 is a protected account in 45. So
I'm motion to accept the treasurer's report.
Second motion. Questions? All in favor?
Along with, like I said, my report, the village making a motion except the what turned over to the county to re-levee the 6,000. That becomes part of the chain of tax law. So that becomes part of the village tax.
When we re-levee through the county, do they take a fee or a percentage for the administration of that re-levee or?
We get dollar for dollar what we give up. They add about 90%.
So they, it's actually, it's costing the taxpayers the additional 9%, but we still get.
Okay, right, right. This is, so, yeah, so I need a motion of this re-levee in this quarter for 86,500.
Favor?
Okay, now with that, I need a motion that total tax war be like 468,768.64. So I need a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Okay, the next thing is that's track 12. Moved it is that is the last five bills on the abstract linked to traffic around short. 81,000.
All in favor? Mark, Kelly seconded it.
The last motion I need is finding transfers that's based off a fund hole.
I'll make a motion to accept the transfers.
Second that motion for the transfers. All in favor?
Last one is to approve the salary sheet that goes along with adopted budget for 201. With a budget for the doctor, all the different hourly rates, not including so I just need that. So when 2-1 comes to bay.
Do we have a copy of that?
I don't think I
So we're just
We're just
We're leaving it out still? Yeah. So what do we, when we do this, what is, what are we leaving in for the union contract?
What was their pay now?
Just their current pay. Okay, sure, okay. Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the salary sheet.
You always, you get a, you get a copy of that.
Second motion. All in favor?
Did we make motion?
Yes, we did. That was the
The other one?
All right. Yeah, well, I think he put the printed out large bills after the abstract.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, if nobody has any questions for Jim, we'll move on to department headed reports, starting with Lynn. You made it. I second, I second that.
There are a few things I want to point out to downtown station. Shannon made a beautiful piece down the drains. Authorization for entrance madeovers. Dr. Jim says that's in this year's budget. I would like to have that done before Memorial Day.
That's the signs?
Yeah.
Cool.
Wow.
So can I go forward through that?
Yes, please.
Also, the authorization, the museum painting, that won't happen until next year's budget, but I'd like to have somebody lock that. Very difficult finding contract. But I want to make sure that she's going to go.
Yeah. We budgeted it. He just needs to make sure he can, he can commit to someone so that they can put us on their schedule because it's gonna take
I think I know who you're talking about. She's good.
If anybody knows, anybody that wants to work 18 years above, need a flower.
How many hours?
How many hours?
Yeah, like a few hours to
I reached out to the department office. Yeah. They're listening at all, so.
Can you put it out for the school? There might be somebody
It's the 15. I think did we go to, so this is listed for 15? Okay, do you want to throw, you want to throw it up on the little template on Facebook? There's a lot of people now to reach out.
I haven't had, I don't, I haven't had a solid answer on all the questions I have for, for next year. I can open you guys, 31st, actually. Two minutes before your and also I'd like a letter made out to, there's a really horrific looking tree in front of 108 West Washington Street. It's on the homeowner's side.
Okay.
It's on his property. If you go over there and look at it, about 20 feet here, there's a hole right in the middle of it, about that big. Tree company actually stopped and told me that that thing is going to come down. But I just put a letter out.
Did you ever get a hold of that?
I had not, well, that tree over there. There was a couple of them.
Any questions for Lynn before we move on to Kathy? Awesome. Thanks, Lynn.
Yeah, I should be quick too. So we've got our new visitor center assistant starting this week. Daryl Giles, she's worked, she's been working for the state support. And she gets free interest management training organization. Well, learned Wesleyan Ontario Place Hotel and the Hilton Water Town, so she's very familiar with the area. We'll be opening this Friday with season. We'll be open for a physical schedule and then no pensions, but we'll be open weekends for some shoulder seasons. So that will be May and into mid-June, we'll be open every day of the week for the summer through Labor Day. And then we'll go back to weekends again. We're still working on the facility application and policy.
Kathy, did you guys come up with your plan for the Labor Day requests for the evening? You had asked me about it. I don't know. Somebody asked to use it like the visitor center Saturday evening.
So at this point, we said no, because they want it fully catered and they want to bring in quite a lot of equipment.
Okay.
I've suggested some alternate locations that we can follow right now.
Okay. Is that, so is that something generally we don't want to do there at all, or is it because it's Labor Day weekend?
And so we thought maybe what we do is we do blackout days for the holiday weekends, just when we know we're going to be busy and then everything else is open.
Okay, I mean, we're closing the evening, right?
We are closing the evening.
It's an evening event. So, I mean, I don't mean to overwrite anything. I just think it's worth discussing. Like, for me, anything that brings people in is good if they're not able to, you know, if they go to the ballroom, that's great too, but they're generally pretty booked in the summer.
I mean, the problem is they're limited percent of the time because we're open till four. So they only have from 4:30 just to be safe.
Sure.
And they have to have a meeting that by 11:00 next morning. It's tough to guarantee that we wouldn't have any problems.
Sure. Yeah. That's fair. Yeah, especially if it's someone you have, if they've done events there before and they're used to the space. So it might be something that like if they're if the, no, I know they probably haven't, but I was saying like in the future, if someone has run events, then you know they're good at getting cleaned up in time. Yeah. Okay.
We also have to verify the
Sure. Do we have a fire?
I mean, is there somewhere?
I mean, is there somewhere?
Yeah.
So we don't approve something that's illegal.
Sure.
Um, the website, this is progressing, we've got events listed up through about early August now. Our website traffic improved quite a bit in April, just everything across the board is up, just great. Our top ten pages make it look like people are actually coming in, planning to visit, so we're staying, we're dying, we're shot.
Great.
Um, we got the whole time your banners sent out, those should be back the next week, one to two weeks.
You already told me, but how many was it, twenty?
We ended up doing twenty-three.
Twenty-three more, so that's. Okay, okay, so that we're up to like fifty-five? That's a lot. It's awesome.
We see a couple of people asking about, oh, like, I missed the deadline, and so at this point I said, if you want to get in, we can do small matches, but you have to at least first get, you're going to those. Nobody did on this yet.
Okay.
Uh, we started going through our files for high quality photos and videos to use with TI Council somewhere, marketing campaign, we're going to work with them to put that together. We'll do the TI Council brochure swap later this month as well. Oh, yeah, and I started contacting the traditional artisans where the board approved at a previous meeting for, I guess, for our next budget year to do a traditional arts program, are we bringing four people? At this point, I've got two people who are interested in coming, who have committed not to a specific date yet, but it would give their available, availability for a question. Um, right now, there'll be a soap demonstration by Kavina Lett, as well as a blacksmith's friend who's going to do a demonstration on Marlon's place.
Cool.
Will those be out on the lawn?
Those will be.
At least, yeah.
How's our, is our fire policy up to date at this?
Yeah.
Um, we're hoping it's a by figure each.
Cool. Nice. Very cool. All set? Any questions for Kathy?
I had one more thing else.
Okay.
In your packet was the tax cap for, that's something that, uh, state implemented five, six years ago, that shows that the village. We could legally raise three hundred and ninety-five thousand eight hundred and eighty-six dollars without overriding the tax cap. That's just a formula that states that municipalities have a side, we could still, if we had enough, uh, we could have some taxes. It shows that we were thirteen thousand six hundred and seventy dollars underneath what the state recommended that we.
Okay.
That, that just has to be filed when it was submitted.
Do you need a motion for that as well, or?
No.
Okay, perfect. Alright, uh, next up is Corey.
Yes, so our Marcus Square Park project, which is part of our part of change. It's last week, right? It's on all the buildings you changes across New York State, and we have a couple of landholders ready.
Exciting.
Yep, probably most likely, talk a little bit, we'll have a pre-bit walkthrough contractor so that they all come through and see what's there. Looking, I've discovered that hopefully later next week, so it gives us some time, just looking at plans, get questions together, we'll take a look what we have there. So, bid opening June second, it's two o'clock. So if there's any good plans, should have been opening unless contractors ask for it. Great. And if it's on our website, if you click on it, there's a list of all the landholders, like it's updated weekly to see who else is interested in this. Um, our water intake project, that we continue to advance that design, I think I mentioned last time, we want to get some water, some rock system. That should happen next month. Board. Our infrastructure is studied, that's looking at last replacement of the water, some infrastructure. Like to have a draft of that report to the village prior to your next board meeting, take a look. If, if we're looking at pursuing some funding this year, um, there's a we application, they're not open yet, each year seems to changes harder than it is, but. Some things that need to be done prior before you submit the application, one seeker, but being this is a replacement of existing lines, it's an easier seeker, it's a type two, so you just not. Stay where there's a type two, and it's done, and then a bottom resolution. But, uh, those, like I said, timeframe, that, well, yeah, but typically in the past, it's been June, July, and give a couple of months, so. I just want to try to get in the best position and look for spinning application, funding application. Brown Shores Road, so the electrical contractor will be onsite next week to install the generators. So, everything goes well, it should be just a week and making everything back online. And the last remaining work down there, Paulus, it's just that little bit of work around the pump station and then the. Check all the man's strong pipe, but they're indicating that's days worth of work, so they're. Looking to schedule that here soon, obviously have great weather, but finished completion is June third, and on that, you have to definitely try that, so. Talk about FEMA, I thought, uh, Mass and Barracks, a little bit, lastly, consolidated funding applications are now open. So, got a little different view this year, so looking into it, but applications we do in July, so it's going to kind of go through all the different programs to have and. Discuss anything like that.
Great.
That's all ahead.
There's one thing, I don't know if you just emailed me or a copy of these guys, but Corey had a request out to the town to give us some information about their future water plans, just so that when we're doing this intake, you know, simple request, just, we wanted to know exactly how many homes they would give water in the next a hundred years. So, basically, we want to estimate the size of the pipe, because we know they're adding water districts, so he just wanted to check on that, which I thought was interesting and a good idea.
Yeah, we had some estimates from the report done six years ago.
Right, yeah, they've added some and they're planning another, so I think it's good to, to get them involved before we size the pipe. Any other questions for Corey? Mr. Gleason?
We all have the piece report. We had several complaints, a couple past school buses, and assists to the fire departments, a few animal complaints that we dealt with. The most important thing probably on there, right, is our front lane speed signs are back up, and we're down with the smells, and I'm afraid that they're pulling speeds on there, right?
That's right.
If not, they blink red at you.
Right, yep. You should do some research on it.
I was.
Well, you almost wanted to top out, right? You don't want it to be a high score competition.
Thank you, that's what I aim for.
It was definitely right.
John, John, you can see one mile an hour, right? Then he's like, so now.
First part is, I saw all three signs.
We're going to have those there for a little bit, and I'll start moving them around accordingly, I don't know where the meeting is.
And it is, those things are not going to be fine.
Well, he told me, he goes, yeah, I got all three out. I said, yeah, I'm aware. Can you email me where you're moving them now?
She was just verifying that they're.
He just puts them wherever he gets complaints, so if you change your route, it's going to be two days later.
Right, we had several assists at the school, and obviously, uh, the safety is a core, that's one thing that we deal with on a weekly basis. Um, was there any questions about the reporter?
Hey, I got a, we witnessed a number of us were standing.
I did, the motorcycle?
Oh, yeah, you didn't tell me about that.
Now, this group I've seen before, so I mean, they, they.
He used to ride with.
They, right.
It's something like, they're telling us what they are, right?
I mean, we were all here for the tree event, and, and, and. Heard these motorcycles start up, and we thought, okay, you know, just loud.
I thought it was a boat at first.
Six, six, seven motorcycles come flying up west main, turn the corner at fifty, sixty, seventy miles an hour.
They, they gone to.
And they're flying past, like you can't even see them, well, one didn't make the turn.
You said that. You were like, oh, one of them might not make the turn, just joking. And later that day, I'm talking to Matt Sheldon, he went, so Matt, Matt Sheldon was over at Brian Topping's house in the garage. And he said, he saw a bike fly by, and then a guy fly by, and they ran out to check on him, and they think he was, he'd been a good fellow, I think he was probably drunk enough that he didn't want to linger. Um, and he started getting his bike back up, and they had a truck with him, I don't know if it was his girlfriend or it's, a woman was driving it. And she said, just throw it in the back, get in the truck, and he said, no, no, I'm good, and he hopped on and took off. And the, Brian went out and was sleeping the pieces of bike off the road.
You could see, yeah, in Washington Park.
So the, he just totally didn't make the turn.
So, I mean, right in front of a whole, whole village.
Yeah, there was like ten of us standing at the tree, like.
They were going, I've never seen somebody go that fast in a village, and a short, like.
Right, they just accelerated. No, no. Brenda, Brenda Squirtle calls, the troopers, and they said, we don't chase them, and they're gone, by now they're out of there, so.
Yeah, they're too fast for you.
Right. So the next question was, did he take the intersection by O D green?
Point being, point being, we, we, it's, it's always.
That was more of the speed type.
They got together, they talked about it, they solved, their problem solved, and hence, the golf cart they gave up.
Right, just a, just a, a gang of V shape.
It was great.
I don't know, Lonnie, you probably remember some activity on Washington Street years ago, because I do, with motorcycles, very fast. Yeah.
So that, that speed thing still is a real tough thing in the building, no matter what, and I'm just, so, they were going so fast, literally, that you might not even know when you're crossing the street.
Well, they were loud enough to, at least people were looking around, but even so, like, I was surprised how fast they, I think, I think they were at least forty-five, fifty before they passed the fire hall from.
Apparently, when doing, clearing up all the sand on the curb, is what you said.
We put Tibet.
Anyway.
Okay, any questions for Officer Gleason?
Did you get your taser?
Yeah.
We got, there, there, there's, they're expensive, I saw them in the films. Hopefully they're not one-time use, right? Alright, uh, next up is the fire department.
Hundred and seventy-one of our papers responded. In the last, this, we had every hundred point two dollars of training program.
Wow.
Ninety-nine percent of that training is done with their own steps, and not paid by the. We did participate in recruiting America before April twenty-third, twenty-fourth, we had lots of people coming to look at our, without a jacket, so. Budget spending is shown below by category. April is traditionally a very low spending month, that first month of our fiscal year. Especially so this year, because we ordered quick. You still don't hit, when you get it, we're expensing it to last year.
Sure.
So the numbers here are a little bit, a little small.
Any questions for the fire department? Oh, you boats in the water? Ready?
Thank you.
Awesome, uh, next up, Connie is not on anymore. Um, alright, so we'll skip that. Dave, do you want to speak for Dave a little bit? Yeah, I think we're good. Alright, Janet, we got your report here. Okay. I'm assuming no one has questions for Janet. Alright, community organization reports. Anyone here from? I think we're good. We waited them out. We'll do one more public comment. Lonnie?
I hope you last time you showed Shannon where you guys are, plenty of the box. Your last day to do that. Question on the infrastructure with Madison Barracks.
Yes.
Numbers don't matter.
Okay.
What was that? Self divisions? Water shore.
Lights, yeah, yeah, no, they're doing a trail and loop sidewalk.
The rest of the stuff is covered under that?
Yes, sir.
There's no bonding involved?
They have bonding.
They have bonded?
Yeah.
What amount? Off the top of my head.
I think it's, it was, uh.
Well, it's supposed to be down to engineer.
Yeah, Corey, Corey approved the amount as reasonable. I don't remember the exact amount.
But just so you don't end up with the same message, it was Mill Creek Lane.
Yes.
They don't do it, you take the bond and finish it under a contract.
Yep.
Right? Forty-five hundred dollars, the amount's still up. Was forty-five, you're supposed to get the check tomorrow?
The check is to cover the expenditures from the, the remainder of the engineering and legal fees. What was it, what was the first?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, so, so, so their legal, their legal and engineering fees totaled about seventeen thousand. That's what that, that check is to finish that from the thirteen they've paid.
Bonding is important, dangerous.
Yeah, the bonding is in place and.
Legal things don't get done, nothing gets filed, nothing's turned over, and you end up with a mess like up here.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure if we know if the, if bonding was in place for Mill Creek and it just didn't. Yep.
That's mine.
Yep. That's a little more than four.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks, thanks for speaking up. Alright, anyone else on Zoom or in the room for public comment? Alright. Who wants to have the honor to? I will second it. All in favor? You can't even do it this time, huh?
I can't bring myself to do it.